I'd like to call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is City Charter Commission Recommendations and Review. And I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney, Ashley Driscoll. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Council. City Attorney Ashley Driscoll. I have with me the Chair of the Charter Review Committee, Alicia Johnson. I'm going to introduce her a little bit more as I get into the presentation. All right. So tonight, what we are doing is presenting the results from the Charter Review Commission's Recommendations to the City Council for potential amendments to the city charter. If the council would like to pursue any amendments, these would be referred to the ballot perhaps in November 2024. So this process has been going on for quite some time now. In late 2022 is when the city first began talking about forming a Charter Review Commission. We had a series of meetings to discuss what that commission would look like, what the scope would be, and some discussion about timelines. In February 2023, the city began the process of recruiting and convening the Charter Review Committee. The overall purpose of the Charter Review Committee was to review your city's charter and determine if it adequately served the community well into the future. So the committee itself consisted of 10 voting members. The city council decided that two of those members should be from each quadrant of the city and three should be at large. And then the committee started meeting in late August of 2023. At our first meeting of the Charter Review Committee, the committee appointed Alicia Johnson to serve as the Chair and the committee appointed Adolf Val Valkyrie as the Vice Chair. And I can say after going through about eight months of meetings, they did exceptionally well, running some meetings always exactly 90 minutes and very productive. So regarding tonight's presentation, I'm going to be going over the scope and the purpose, and then I'm going to turn it over. And both the Chair and I are going to be reviewing and explaining each one of the recommendations from the committee. And after each one of the substantive topics, we are going to stop for questions, comments, and discussion from the council. So diving right in, as I talked about, we started meeting in late 20, I said 2022 earlier, late 2023 regarding the scope of what the committee's task would be. And the charter delegated authority to, I'm sorry, the council delegated authority to the Charter Review Commission to review the entire charter, to compare your charter to the current League of Oregon City model charter, identify any areas that the committee was interested in pursuing, and then pay specific attention to four areas that the city council asked the Charter Review Committee to review. Those areas are geographical representation for council members, limits on the, term limits for the mayor and council members, the necessity of a city manager residency requirement, and the role of the mayor and the council president. So as I mentioned, we have been meeting since late August. We had 15 publicly noticed meetings. Those meetings were held here in the community auditorium and were accessible via Zoom. Part of the expectation document from city council was also that the committee receive and consider public input. So at two of those meetings, we had an opportunity for the public to comment upon a draft amended charter and a draft committee report. And we had three members of the community participate and provide really great feedback that the council, the committee then considered and incorporated into its findings. All right. A little bit about our process and how the committee approached this task because it is, it is a pretty significant and open-ended task. So the first things that we did is we compared the current city charter to the League of Oregon City's model charter and evaluated the differences. You know, where the two documents differ, where they're not, there weren't a ton of those. We took a look at what the city's current language said and what the model charter language said and discussed whether it made sense to align the city's charter with the model charter. Of the city, the committee also reviewed for other areas that the committee was interested in reviewing. And by a majority vote, if the majority of the committee would like to pursue that subject area, that subject area was put onto the list. And those subject areas included ranked choice voting, a process for appointing city counselors. And then also, they took recommendations from the city attorney. And my recommendations included reviewing how the city handles appointing city counselors when the council has a number of vacancies and a number of procedural issues that I have noticed through my years working with the city. So after we identified areas for substantive areas for review, we went through each one of those charter sections in numerical order and addressed each one. The process was typically that I would introduce the topic. I would do a short staff report on the subject area and provide some information. So the committee considered information that was applicable to each section under review. So for instance, we looked at a lot of historical Forest Grove information. For example, how many people typically run city government? That was one that we looked at in terms of when we were discussing wards and districts. We also looked at voter turnout information, representation from each jurisdiction, the tenure for council and mayors, any piece of information that would help the city deliberate on the subject matter and they felt would be useful, we gathered for them. And I say we, I should, I should give some credit to Joyce Phillips, who did a great job helping the committee gather all of this information. We also looked at information from comparable jurisdictions around Washington County to see how similar cities handled these, these types of issues. And then when appropriate, we also looked at statewide data. We also looked at research papers, NPR articles, you know, legal opinions regarding the different matters that we are facing. And once the committee believed that they had enough information to make a decision, the committee started deliberating and discussing each one of the substantive areas. The approach that the committee took is first by answering the question, is this a charter issue? So we took a look at what the issue was that the committee wanted to address and then asked the question, is changing the charter, charter the most appropriate or effective way to effectuate the change? The committee discussed at length that the charter functions as the municipal equivalent of a constitution setting forth the guiding principles for government. So the charter can also be inflexible and difficult to amend. And when you make changes, there can often be unintended consequences, and it can be difficult to evolve with a changing environment. An overly prescriptive charter can produce inefficiencies and restrict the city from adjusting to or evolving with a changing environment. And as I mentioned, it can also create unintended, unintended advantages or disadvantages to certain groups. So that, to that end, the committee approached each matter by first asking if this was a charter issue or if this could be addressed through a different avenue, such as an ordinance policy, a change in council, or administrative personnel. In the end, what we looked at is the big picture. So the committee endeavored to look at historical patterns and longstanding concerns facing the city rather than drafting amendments that were targeted towards one specific, one specific set of circumstances or individuals. So that's the process we went through. As I mentioned, we had 15 meetings. So these things were often discussed at length and a lot of information was gathered. My personal opinion is that the conversations were robust, that, you know, the Chair made sure that everybody was, everybody participated. And I would say I was very impressed with this group of meetings. So before I move on, is there any discussions or questions about that? Great. So how we're going to divide, you know, going over each one of these subjects is similar to how we took it, is I'll do a quick, you know, staff-like report, go over the subject that was discussed, and then Chair Johnson will go over, you know, how the committee reached its. So the first area that we looked at was one of the areas that the council asked for a specific recommendation on, and this is wards or districts. So I would, I would say out of all the topics that we looked at, this one was the one that we looked at the most background information. As I mentioned, we, we looked at a research paper, we looked at legal opinions, the committee looked at data specific to Forest Grove and spent a lot of time considering whether to recommend that the city change its, how it elects its city counselors from all the counselors being elected at large to all, all or some of the city counselors being elected from a district or ward. One of the first things we talked about is that there's really four different kinds of, of districts or wards. So the first one is when the candidates are nominated by ward, but they're voted on at large. So essentially, you know, if you had four districts, you just had to have, have to have one candidate from each of those districts, but then everybody in the city votes on all four of them. Candidate, the second option is candidates are nominated by ward but voted and voted on only by ward. So that's electoral ward, so you're only voting on the candidate within your ward. The third one is some candidates nominated by, by ward, some at large, but all vote, all voting is at large. And then last one, some candidates nominated by ward, voted on by ward, and others at large and voted on at large. Ultimately, as Alicia's going to get into a little bit more, the committee is not recommending that the city move forward with wards or districts. I'm just going to go over a little bit of the information that they looked at in reaching that decision. So we pulled a lot of statewide data providing which cities implemented wards and details about their system, including what the population was of those cities, how many wards they had, what the electoral system was. As I said, you know, are they voting on them at large or are they voting districts? And then total numbers of counselors. The committee also looked at our comparable jurisdictions within Washington County, only the largest of the district of the cities within Washington County, the city of Philpharo, is divided into wards, all of the other jurisdictions, which include Sherwood, Tigard, Cornelius, Walton, and Newburgh are not. We also looked at a legal opinion on the drawing of voting districts. And the issue behind that is if you create voting wards, you have to make sure that you align with the statewide constitutional mandates of equal voting. We took a look, look at what that would require of the city and essentially what it would require is a biannual census to make sure that your voting, voting districts are, you know, create an equal voting environment. The committee also looked at map showing where current council represent, map showing current council representation by quadrant. So in reviewing a map of the residence, the residency of current council, the committee noted there was at least one counselor from each one of the four districts of, I'm sorry, four quadrants of the city. Also looked at the voter data in Forest Grove and current geographical representation on city boards and commissions. And then Forest Grove data on turnout, on voter turnout by precinct since 2019. And then finally, a research paper on the electoral ward system in Oregon. That paper was from 2003, and it was very interesting. And Joyce helped me update those numbers to make sure that we are looking at more current data that provided a lot of the background on, you know, the cities that did use wards, what was their population base. So once we gathered all of that information, the committee began to deliberate. I'm going to turn it over to Chair Johnson about what was most important.
Evening. When we took a look at wards, and I have a lot of that here, but I'm really here. We really tried to, and not just with wards, but with all of our conversations we had, we really tried to ask ourselves, what are we trying to accomplish here besides just looking at the issues that you requested? What is the overarching theme here that we as a committee, we as community members feel is most important? And one of those terms that continued to pop up was just the equity. Changes that we're looking at, and they help increase or enhance equality. And that has many layers to it, right? But when we looked at wards, just looking at, as Ashley said, the data, some of the major concerns and things we went back and forth on as a committee is when you divide an area up into wards, you run the risk of there's a benefit because you have lower, lower costs when you're running, you're campaigning. But the downside of that is that person that's running for a particular ward may tend to just focus on issues of their area. And if you have an entire council that's just focused their particular area, it can be a lot harder to achieve consensus, whereas with our current system, everyone is representing the community as a whole. So that was one of the bigger pieces. Ashley mentioned it as well. Another overarching theme besides the equitable piece, how can we enhance that, was looking at unintended consequences by dividing our city up in wards. So we did take a look at our, our current quadrant system and looking from a precinct standpoint. And voter, voter engagement regrettably is, is low. And by creating these different areas, we could potentially be in a situation where we have a ward where there perhaps isn't a viable fit. And then we go from having that democratic process in the sense of the community elect their official to it falls on the hands of the city to act on that ward. Those are the major factors we discussed. The other thing I would like to point out after reviewing the data, a lot of data, it was a unanimous, unanimous decision to not recommend wards at this time. I will mention however, as, as you'll hear me repeat a few times tonight, besides those overarching themes, is that wards is a great idea, but as a city, I'm not there. I'd like to open it to your questions.
Councilor Ying.
I thank you this evening, I mean, and for your guest here. Well, first of all, I really want to extend my, it was one of the most meaty, one of the most well-reserved things I've, uh, other professional development. But regardless, so in the ward, did you get any input from community members or from individuals themselves that they weren't with, without having to work with this?
That's a great question. So we did take a look or take into consideration the livability survey. And what we kept circling back to in terms of that equity piece, we talk about guarantee, guaranteeing equal representation. And just based on the data, based on the, you know, looking at the opinions, wards does not, or at least we were of the opinion, wards do not guarantee that, especially when the engagement isn't quite where we would hope to be.
So, yeah. So the livability study, but I guess my curiosity, and I do not just, I guess my curiosity is, could we, is there a way for us to identify particular areas of the community that don't, that they're being fully represented? Did that happen to come forward? I know it wasn't, but did that happen to come forward from any individuals?
I mean, absolutely. Just, you know, from our 11-person committee, you have people from every quadrant of the city. And just that overarching thing is how, how can we enhance things? How can we have more equal representation? So it's definitely in the hearts and minds of, of everyone. That's a bit of assumption, just talking about a lot of people in the room, but representing from all different parts of the city. So does that answer your question?
It does, but I guess that as a follow-up, for us in the future, I just want to make sure not to think forward that somehow we are competing with anything that's being fully represented.
And, and maybe that's another way I can word this is we felt this was more of an engagement issue than equal representation. Instilling wards would not create more engagement.
Any other questions? We can go to the next topic.
Let's see. All right. So the next topic is the role of the mayor and the council president. I'll introduce this briefly and then turn it over to Alicia. So this is one of the topics that the council asked the committee to look at specifically. And I would say the one that we went back and forth on the most, you know, are there improvements to the role of the mayor and the council president that would, you know, meet the committee's goals? I'm going to turn it over to Alicia to talk about what the committee is ultimately recommending on this topic and why.
I think I'll give a little bit of background on our conversation. So again, I don't say it a lot, but going back to that equity piece and how, how can we ensure that all voices are, that we have representation from all of our different parts of, of the corners of this community? So one of the things we discussed was the role of the mayor. So you have the, the policy piece, you have the administrative piece, and people serving as the leaders on for the city. What we were most concerned with and spent a lot of time talking on is really, not just with our city, but at all levels of government across the nation. Facilitation is essential. Being a consensus builder is environment. And just ensuring that all voices are heard. So initially, when we looked at the role of the mayor, we were discussing and looking at changing it to mirror some of our other partners, other city partners, going to voting only in case of a tie. And not to do that in the sense of taking the right to vote away from the mayor, but really just lightening the load in the sense that they now have the ability to really focus on building consensus and facilitating. But as we went through this process, and, and I'll say, when we originally discussed this and we went around a few times, a couple of meetings, it passed by a slim margin. It was six to five vote. So the mayor voting, agreeing that the mayor should only vote in case of a tie. After we had our listening sessions, our, our public hearings, we received a lot of valuable community feedback and decided to revisit the issue and discuss it further. And after going through, just kind of deciding why we were really wanting to make this change, it, it came down to when we talk about facilitation, it really falls on that individual. And by taking away their vote, isn't necessarily going to guarantee that they're going to facilitate. So really, we, we reached the consensus that are we doing this more so in an effort to try to think of the way to put this, look at an individual as opposed to looking things from a broader perspective? So after reviewing, like I said, that community feedback, it ended up being a, almost a unanimous vote with a nine to one vote to just leave the mayor's role, voting role as it is. Other recommendations we did however make is with the council president, having that be a rotating position just to ensure that we are building that next generation of leaders, that it's not just the same person in that role. The other thing we looked at was changing the role of the mayor from political head to civic leader. So as the charter, it, it's not just about comparing things and looking at what's recommended, but it's also asking that question is, are the changes we're making today going to represent the community in future? And one of the things we were saying is with political head, it, it tend to have, tends to have a negative connotation of it. And when we think of things more from a civic leader, it, it's really, again, focusing back on that facilitation, fostering engagement. So those are essentially the recommendations.
Nope. So this is a recommended change from the committee, and it's just to be text of the role of the council president. So the council president will not serve for more than two consecutive years. That doesn't mean that the council president, it does not mean that the council president isn't voted on each year. It's just after two years, the council president is mandated to rotate. There is some extra text on this slide. I believe that last, that last sentence is not included in the amended report or on the amended charter. That language was from when the committee was recommending that it be for with the mayor. So just kind of ignore the last on the slideshow.
I had a question. Going back to the proposed change, changing the mayor's role as a political head of the city to a civic leader, where did that language come from? Is that in the LOC charter? Is that in, I mean, I know Tuolton just did their charter, Sherwood, Tigard. Did that come from, I mean, like where did that, where did that new language come from?
Yeah. So when we are going through, one of the, the words just stuck out when we were talking about the role of the mayor within the committee. And the committee started talking about whether or not the word political really reflected the charter and in the changing city. And so I believe the city at Tigard at, during their process, was also looking at changing political head of the city to something else. I don't know if they ended up doing that. But the word civic was just a, you know, came up through the conversation. So without changing really the substantive role of the mayor, could we find a word that reflects that role better? And so it was, you know, we went through quite a few different potential words, and civic leader was the one that they thought reflected the role of the mayor without having some of that part.
Thank you. Councilor Gustafson.
Just a comment, I, I do prefer the, the term civic leader as opposed to head, just because it, it brings me back into, you know, corporate life where you were the boss, right? And you're the person in the back, you see the picture of them, you know, flipping the whip versus a leader who's at the front pulling along with all of their employees, right? It's, it's where you're putting that, that leader. Are you, are you pushing your employees or are you right there working with them and leading them? So I really like the, the term change.
And just to provide a little clarification to you, to what you were saying, the, the negative connotation, excuse me. The word that kept coming up when we, when we speak of negative connotation was that autocratic approach. And when you say political head, it, it tends to imply that same.
Thank you. Councilor Ying, did you have a question?
Yeah. So I will say that that is at the door, stop, let's go ahead. That term always came up, did come up quite a bit. So I'm really glad that you guys went further and put in something that is less politically defined. So my question is, that, did you receive any type of pushback or any type of clarification as to the change civic while you were going through the listening sessions or input to the unit?
I, I think there were definitely varying opinions, but what we circled back to as a community is really making sure that the language we choose is sustainable beyond today. And just really focusing on what, what do we, what do we want our leaders to be? And it's really focusing on that collaborative piece.
Ashley, did you happen to have an opportunity for a nonpartisan position to look at whether or not using it and titling it as a political leader? Had any legal ramifications?
So, no, I don't believe that there are any legal ramifications. It is the term that is used in the League of Oregon State Model Charter as well. And it really is supposed to be a term that just incorporates sort of those unstated roles of the mayor. You know, despite, you know, being a leader among equals, that often the mayor is seen as, you know, the leader of the city and recognizing, recognizing that role within the city charter. And there are oftentimes auxiliary duties that are assigned to the mayor. And again, just recognizing and encompassing those within the charter. We did get some, and I think this was your question, we did get some public comments about the change from political head or proposed change from the political head to civic leader. And some of that commentary was that, again, encapsulating those, those other duties of the mayor and that, you know, in some ways it is a political position, not a partisan position, but as a lower casey type.
Councilor Rippe.
That's the, thank you again. Appreciate all the work that went into this. With regard to this, and I agree with you, I think that the, the term political leader is ambiguous at best and can be open for interpretation. And we've already discussed about the autocratic notion of it. But the, the city, city governance is, is a council form of government. And so in all, in truth, the head of the government is the council, not the mayor. So when you discussed this, were you focusing just on the mayor? Or were you focusing also the fact that the governing body is the council? And the role of the mayor in that council is what really needs to be described accurately? So, and then, and then the political part of it, to me, did you discuss the, because of the ambiguity of it and the little people, the potential unintended influence of partisan politics at a nonpartisan level of government? Did you discuss any of that?
Fill in the gaps.
You know, I would say with all of these issues, and man, I wish they were, you can't go back and watch them. But with every issue, we, we spent a lot of time asking ourselves, it wasn't necessarily just about the mayor or one, anything specific, but just looking really from a holistic standpoint, what, what do we want to stand for? And when we talk about council, when we talk about the mayor, there shouldn't really be a claiming of a political stance, right? It's supposed to be nonpartisan. So we did look at that, and we literally, at one point, were in the dictionary like, okay, like what, let's make sure this is, you know, this is an accurate description and checking with Ashley, going back and forth, what are the legal ramifications? So there, there really was a lot of back and forth discussion on that. I hope that answers it.
Right, but what your recommendation though leaves it as ambiguous as it was all along. And, and I, I am personally not necessarily sure that the LOC has it right in their model. That's not the gospel for my, it's a, it's a template to use, but it, it's really up to each of the city.
Yes, so I can address some of that. When you were saying, did you consider all these things? I was, I was smiling because like, yes, we spent a lot of time on this issue. You know, what is the most appropriate word choice? And, you know, I think the LOC model charter is a great place to start, and I agree with you that it's not the Bible. One of the things that I think is helpful is there is a footnote in the LOC model charter, and it says that, you know, the political head makes specific the apparent and inherent authority of the office. And that's what I was trying to articulate earlier, that there are a lot of, there are some apparent and inherent authorities that of the mayor, you know, in the role of the mayor, you know, whether or not they're the person who's invited the ribbon cutting, et cetera, to encompass that within your city charter gives the council the ability to be able to define that through your council. And so I think that is why most city charters recognize that there are some additional roles of the mayor, and then you guys can fill in the bottom of the column, so to speak, through your council roles and your other, through your other documents. So we did spend a lot of time looking at the role of the mayor, the role that the mayor serves on the council and how they fit in. And again, you know, we went back and forth quite a bit on this word. And then, you know, was it tight, tight vote, I believe? I'm not remembering what exactly that was. Then after the public comment, went back to.
Wait, could you say that again? So you, you said that after the public comment, you went back and voted on it, and then the consensus was to go back to political head? So not to change it to civic leader?
The recommendation is not to change.
Okay, it looked like on the thing that it was saying, the recommendation was to change it to civic leader.
It said in the packet, it said exactly what we have here. No proposed amendment.
Okay.
Which is status quo, which leaves it ambiguous as it was all along, which doesn't.
I think the, I mean, I don't think, it's not time for discussion about it yet. Okay, so we'll, we'll pause and then, are there any more questions on this section?
Do you want us to keep going through other substantive areas then?
Yeah, let's just, let's move on. So I think we have our questions answered. It's more of like a deliberation.
If you need my thesaurus, we can get it, we can get it out as we did with the, with the committee. The next topic is term limits. So what we were looking at is the city of Forest Grove does not have any term limits for your counselors or your mayor. And so I'm going to actually turn this one also over to Alicia to talk through the committee's recommendations.
I'm going to read off the slide and then I'll elaborate from there. So we went back and looked at data from the last 20 years. The most thing that we looked at was the LOC, comparing cities of population, considered a result of citywide livability survey. So taking community feedback into it as well. And then really just taking that time to look at the pros and cons, so the benefits of having term limits and what some of those cons were. So some of the, the key things we talked about were really going back to that engagement piece. And the ultimate concern was because our engagement is not yet where we would like it to be by putting term limits into place. We could be potentially limiting those individuals who can and are willing to serve. Also with that said, if, if someone new is wanting to run, they still have the ability to do so. Other things we talked about is the importance of continuity. And there's something to be said for having that, that experience on the council. And really just that we're, you know, I, I believe, we believe as a charter that term limits are important and I think they need it at all levels of government. But as a city, we are not there to really foster a little bit more engagement before we still.
Yeah, I have a question. I'm sorry, I'm like, I can call on myself. The livability survey, I believe a large percentage of the people who completed that survey wanted term limit. Is that correct or?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven percent of the 1,128 people. And then, what, I guess what? I guess I need a little bit more. So in the overarching theme of looking at equity, accessibility and engagement, right? Like, so I'm hearing like, we don't have the engagement to make these changes. How, how does having, I guess I'm not following how having term limits goes against those overarching values?
Sorry, I'm going to speak a little bit. So just looking at that average 30% turnout was part of it. But also too, just looking at data, you know, because we talked about how we went back 20 years. And when we take a look at, from a quadrant standpoint, where council members, where mayors are coming from, we do actually, at this time, we are getting representation from all of those areas. And really, it just comes down to that concern if, if we were to place those limits, even though we are getting representation from those areas, it, if that representation is sometimes coming from folks who are willing to run again, and we don't have any new people stepping up yet, are, are we putting ourselves, backing ourselves into the corner and limiting our pool of candidates?
I have a follow-up question for Ashley. If someone has termed out, let's say we did a term limit of two terms per position, right? So after their eight years, they've termed out and no one runs. Based on our charter right now, could the council and that person, it would go to an appointment process, correct? And then could the council appoint that person who had termed out?
So it would depend on the language of the charter? But, you know, I think typically they would be ineligible to have another term because the idea is that elected or appointed.
They'd two terms.
I mean, again, it would, it would depend on what your desire was, and we can draft language to whatever the council desires. But typically, like if you're at the end, if your, their term limits, you can't run and can't be in that position for at least a certain period.
Okay. Any other questions about term limits?
Councilor Rippe.
Yeah, I'd like to understand the logic or rationale behind it's an infringement of the democratic process.
The infringement.
Why, what's the rationale behind the infringement or claiming it's an infringement on the democratic process?
On the bottom of the.
So when we were talking about the infringement piece, so when someone is elected, right? They're elected by majority vote. And what we were saying is by putting term limits in place, we are limiting and telling people who they cannot vote for on, on the simplest level. That is what we were, we're being by infringement of.
No, actually, you got it perfectly. So I mean, it is more like one of those general responses to term. You know, when you, when you research this issue and why some entities choose to use some term limits and some don't, one of the biggest cons that people reference is infringement on the democratic process, meaning that the electorate isn't electorit, isn't getting to decide who they want to represent them. There's this other, there's this other eligibility requirement that they have to exert. So essentially, somebody that the people want to represent them is ineligible.
In a perfect world.
Yes.
It's arguable because sometimes I think that, I don't want to get into discussion. I'm sorry.
We're delivering, yeah, it happens. It's fine.
I have to remind myself we're in the question.
Are there, are there any other questions on term limits? I have one follow-up question. Out of the comparables, how many municipalities have term limits and how many do not?
I believe I have this in my notes. So Cornelius and Newburgh have no term limits. Hillsborough, Sherwood and Tigard do. The League of Oregon State Model does not include term limits. And Hillsborough, Sherwood and Tigard all have different term limits. I believe Sherwood just implemented them. One of them has like a, you know, how many years within a 20-year period? They went pretty deep on how they wanted those term limits.
Thank you.
I believe Hillsborough just three.
It's eight years, right? Per position or eight years total?
It's eight years per position.
In Hillsborough?
So the other question I had, I'm sorry, but was, did, did you have anything on Beaverton? What was Beaverton?
Beaverton is not included in my notes, but I can find out.
Okay, I think we can move on.
So the next one is city manager residency requirement. So the city manager residency requirement as is relatively simple. It's whether or not the city is going to require in your charter that the city manager reside within the city limits. You currently do have a city manager residency requirement within your charter, and the committee is recommending that you remove that requirement. And if it is something that is important to the council, that it's something you can negotiate with. And Chair Johnson can give you through some of those, some of the reasons the committee is recommending.
So this discussion ended up surprising me a little bit in the sense that there was quite a bit of opinion on it. But as we went around and deliberated on the issue, what it really came down to is a city manager requires an substantial, substantial amount of experience. And by saying the individual has to live within a particular area, again, going back to some of the other discussions we had, you're really limiting your pool of candidates. And we also felt that, you know, as a charter committee, it, we're tasked with looking at, are there other avenues? Is this something appropriate for the charter? And we felt that this sort of subject matter is best handled on a different level, perhaps in the hiring process and negotiating. As I said, we did go around a little bit, and one of the concerns was, you know, if you have somebody who's hired in this role, it's important to be able to find the pulse or know the pulse of, of the city. But that's not to say that you can't negotiate. Okay, you're, you're hired, we'll take you, you live an hour away. What, what's the realistic timeframe for you to move closer or move into city limits? Just by putting that in the charter, even putting it in the charter with a timeframe on it, we really felt that would not do service to.
Councilor Ewing.
So yes, this has been an issue of 19 years that I've been serving. So I'm appreciative of the fact that you gave it consideration. So one of the questions that I'd like to kind of discuss a little bit further, was there a conversation on, so as I understand from your conversation, you felt that was better than a contract position than perhaps stating specifically that they need to be within, you know, a certain driving distance in case of an emergency? Or is it in the charter that they have to live in Oregon? So kind of walk you through that conversation a little bit.
So we, and we actually did talk about all those very, those very things. And to the credit of, of the council or whoever in the hiring role, we're not going to hire someone in California to represent Forest Grove. So, so we looked at that piece, and then we talked specifically about maybe we have you have to be within 45 minutes or so many miles. What if the housing, and there isn't a house within? Or there isn't, there's, there's an accident or some sort of catastrophe, and they're not able to get here within 45 minutes? What, you know, what, what then? So we really tried to take it very seriously in the sense of looking at. So we really tried to, um, take it very seriously in the sense of looking at all of these things and what are the unintended consequences associated with it? And we really felt the best tool for that would be in contract.
And Chair Johnson said that perfectly, just to add one additional piece, is that's where the inflexibility of if you put fifteen miles between. Yeah, and so, you know, we did have all of those.
I don't see any other questions on that.
All right. So, um, recommending the change, the manager need not reside in the city. So these are, um, I'm going to take these, these are more, uh, you know, procedural changes that the committee is recommending. So first, uh, I, the committee is recommending changes to how you enact your ordinances and approve resolutions and orders. This is really just an efficiency tool for the city. It aligns with the League of Oregon City Mob Charter. And it gives the city the ability instead of having to read aloud any amendments to ordinances, resolutions or orders, that the city can just make sure that those are made available ahead of time. And then you can choose to read any substantive amendments during the meeting, but you're not required to. Any questions on that?
Councilor Ewing.
Okay, so what does that benefit us other than for clarity and for members who are not as familiar with the methodology of going through this? What does it actually provide us as a council and a city that we currently aren't?
Efficiency when you need it. So, you know, again, it's always the council's option to read any, you know, substantive amendments aloud. But, you know, if you post an agenda and this doesn't happen under Jesse's watch, you know, but sometimes things come up and, you know, you have to make a change. So you post the agenda on Tuesday, you realize on Wednesday that there's some changes that you need to put into your ordinance, you repost those, you know, the following day. Then, you know, they've been in your packet for a, a good amount of time. You don't have to use your precious council meeting time to read aloud all of these changes they've been incorporating. So it gives you that option whereas before you.
Will there be any equitability concerns in terms of people that perhaps don't have the website, they're, they're counting on, you know, really seeing where they need to be and what the title is? Does that change to cause any concerns?
I'm trying to think that through. I mean, my, my gut reaction is, is no. Because, you know, it's, it's just somebody that is accessing the agenda on Monday and then something needs to be updated, something's updated on Tuesday and then it says amended in the packet on Monday, on the day of the meeting. So they're aware that they're. Thanks. Um, so the next one is also a relatively minor amendment. So you guys do not align with the League of Oregon Cities regarding when the term of your council actually begins. And this one has tripped me up on, on a number of occasions. So, under your current charter language, it says the term of the new counselors begins immediately after election is certified by the county elect. So that happens sometime in December. You know, we're not able to say when exactly it happens. But it always sneaks up on me, I'll tell you. And most cities have the terms start the first meeting in January, the year following the election. And that gives you guys the opportunity to plan for that transition. Or would give you the opportunity to plan for that transition. So the elections are certified in December, any election challenges, any vote recounts, those are all taken care of. And then everybody knows that the term has a set day and time. And so it is a small recommendation, but I think it would really help with efficiency and your transition.
Any questions?
Okay. Um, so a small amendment there. The next one is filling vacancies. And this one is a little bit more of, of a meatier amendment that the committee is proposing. And this issue has, has come up across the state a number of times in, in the last year or two. And, um, I want to make sure that you are aware of this issue. And if you would like, the council would like to make changes about how you would deal with this particular circumstance, you fully consider that. So your charter has a quorum requirement, which means the minimum number of counselors present at a meeting to do any. And your quorum is defined as the majority of the council positions. So the amount of counselors you need present to hold a meeting is four. And that is regardless of whether or not you have any vacancies. So if you have five counselors instead of seven, your quorum number doesn't change. It, it stays at four because it's the majority of the council positions. So if there are too few seated counselors to reach a quorum, the charter doesn't provide any guidance and you can't do any city business. So in that case, one of two different provisions of state law clicks in. If all the seats are empty, so if you guys have no seated city counselors, the state law provides that the county board of commissioners will come in and appoint a quorum of your. And so you have, you basically delegated authority to another unit of government to, to appoint a quorum of your council. If only some seats are empty, but you do have some counselors still remaining in their seats. So let's say that you have three counselors rather than four. You can call a special election to fill that one seat. But no matter what, that election is, there's going to be a lag time. And during that lag time, the city council can't meet and conduct any business. And then it's likely not going to align with the county's election schedule. And so the city would be responsible for, um, funding that election. So this most recently came up in Baker City, Oregon. Maybe some of you have been following that, but four of the city's seven counselors resigned for different reasons. And the remaining three counselors were faced with this, you know, conundrum of how to face, how to deal with this issue. And they ended up having the remaining three counselors resign. So that triggered the provisional law that says the county board of commissioners will appoint a quorum of city counselors. And so the Baker County Board of Commissioners then appointed four people to the Baker City Councils so they could do business. Interestingly, um, the board of county commissioners didn't appoint any of the ones who addressed the reason. So the committee found, uh, you know, the committee talked about the provisions of state law and the fact that if, if this situation was to happen at the city of Forest Grove, unless you have charter provisions in place to address it, you're going to be the backstop of the state. So we went over a lot of different ways to, to address this issue. And a lot of cities address it through the quorum provision of their charter. And essentially what they say is that the quorum adjusts with your seated number of councilors. And that is a way to address it. The downside to that is that there's no guardrails on it. And then what you have is a consolidation of power in a minority of counselors and no real limits on, well, some limits, but, um, they can make all sorts of decisions on behalf of the city. They can't pass any ordinances because they won't have the requisite number to pass ordinances. But they can pass resolutions, they can pass motions and they can take other actions. So we, the council, or I'm sorry, the committee talked about the fact that they would like to address this situation, but not create that situation where they consolidate power in a minority of counselors and don't, don't have any guardrails on. So the process of the proposed amendment is that when we're at the actual filling of vacancy language, there is a carve-out, and I'm going to see if I have this language. So there's a carve-out on your charter language when it comes to filling vacancies. And it says a mayor or counselor vacancy will not be filled, will not be filled by appointment by a majority of, will be filled by a majority of, by appointment by a majority of the remaining council members, notwithstanding any quorum or voting requirements of the charter. So what that is intended to say is that for this one vote only, for only the vote to appoint people to your council, you can have less than a quorum and you don't need a majority of quorum to actually just make that one decision. So a minority of counselors aren't allowed to pass resolutions or do anything except make this decision, which is to appoint additional counselors. So the other, and I'm going to go through this, I'm sure there's going to be some questions about that. The other thing we talked about is once counselors are appointed, under your current charter, they fill the remaining term of whatever counselor vacated the seat. So I think you've had situations where somebody, you know, was appointed, or I'm sorry, was elected into city council and then they vacated their seat within the first year. And so an appointed member of council then serves three and a half years. Other cities, to use the language that the committee is recommending, that says the employee's term of office shall begin immediately upon appointment and qualification and shall continue to the first council meeting of the year immediately after the next general election. So if you get appointed in the first year before your term, your appointment is until the next general election. And then that general election is for the end of the term. So it's not a four-year term, it's two years. So that means that you don't have, that you keep all the counselors on the same rotation, that somebody is only appointed for a maximum of two. And then the last, um, change that the committee is recommending for this is actually something that's already been incorporated into your, into your municipal code now, is that the council must adopt by ordinance a process for appointing members to vacant council positions. So to have that in the charter to make sure that you always have a process that's outlined. And one of the other, um, points that the city, or I'm sorry, that the charter review commission would like you to consider is as part of those appointment rules, making sure that appointment is for, is on a single counselor basis, that you're not appointing a slate of counselors. To again, sort of, uh, address potential abuse of that one, one instance where you can take action without a quorum. So with that, I'll, I'll take questions.
Okay, Councilor Rippe.
I've got two questions. First of all, the first sentence there, let me make sure I understand. Is it will or will not be filled?
I, I'm pretty sure it's will, I think that is.
All right. Then the second question I have has to do with the second paragraph. And I understand completely what you're trying to say, the next general election. My only question has to do with, right now, we are set up that there's, uh, every two years it's four and three. But if, if this happens, we could get out of balance where it might be five and two or. So how do you ensure that that balance doesn't?
Great question, it's one that we talked about. And that's why the second part is only a two-year. So they're going to, you're going to stay on the same page instance. So if, if somebody is, if you get appointed in the second two years of the term, then you just write out those, those last two years of the original term. And then it's an election for a four-year term. But if you get appointed in the first two years, you just are appointed for the next general election. The seat is for a two-year term. And then, you know, maybe you get elected to that two-year term, maybe somebody else does, but it's just two years. So your seat never gets out of order.
So I had a follow-up question similar to that. So I'm just wondering within Washington County elections and the work that the staff has to do for the election. So we're all at large, right? So how, I'm getting really ticky-tacky and in the weeds. But how do people, how do the voters know that you vote? Because you vote for your three, right? You vote at large for three positions. So this would be three, would that be a separate?
It would be a separate, like. It'd be like the mayor, the mayor's separate from the rest of.
This would be like appointed position for this two terms. And then, so this, so then instead of running at large, people would go in to the city recorder's office and say, hey, I want to just run for this two-year term. I'm running for a four, you see, I'm like trying to play this out.
It's a great question, but yes, that's exactly how it works. Like on a year that it's a mayor electoral year, there would be the mayor's position, the regular city council positions, and then this two-year.
That's how you keep your balance.
And then another question I had is, I thought we had. At, so we've, since I've been on council, we've done three appointments. And we always use the same process. And I thought we had an ordinance and a process for appointing. And so when I see that emboldened, I'm like, or do we not have?
No, you do. And we talked about this, um, but now we're adding it as a charter requirement. So you don't, this is something that you already do, just incorporate that requirement into.
Okay. Councilor Ewing, did you have your hand raised?
So I have to say that I'm not tracking completely here. So you're saying that, yeah, the ballot comes out, you're specifically, it will be called out on the ballot, an appointed position?
No, so it would be like you run for mayor and you have the people that are running for mayor. And then, you know, the next option is all the people who are running for four-year city council seats. And then you have a separate race for that two-year, or for that two-year position.
But it's still elected, it's just.
And so somebody could choose, like, it would be a choice that, let's say that I want to run for city council that year. I can either choose to put my, my name in the hat for the four-year full term, or I could choose to put my name in the hat for the two.
So just playing devil's advocate. I mean, just as someone who's gone through the election process, like, I don't know why anyone would run for the two-year when you have to buy signs, get signatures, like all the work, right? So if that two-year, if no one runs for the two-year position, then what happens?
Appointment usually.
So then can we reappoint the person we appointed?
As long as there are not any terms or other, other.
You see what I'm saying? Because I, I'm just like trying to think, like, the, I think the idea, I totally understand the idea. I just think that, like in, in action of knowing how much work it takes and putting yourself out there, like, I guess if no one else is running for the two-year term and you don't want to run against, I don't.
It might be an opportunity for.
I think you're going to actually have people that want the two-year and not commit the four-year.
Oh, maybe, that's true. I mean, four years is a lot.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we'll see, we'll, we'll discuss this later. Sorry, I forgot it in the discussion.
Any other questions?
Any other questions about vacancies? Seeing none.
Um, I'm prising through. So the last, um, the last, I would say like minor recommendation that we have is just updating, um, the reasons for disqualification or declaring a vacancy of city counselors. Um, the language that you currently have is that, um, the council may declare a seat vacant when a public, when a seated city counselor commits any public offense punishable by loss of liberty. The committee is recommending that we align with the League of Oregon City Mob Charter language and instead, um, move to, um, conviction of a misdemeanor or felony crime. So that's the change. Um, we also looked at the League of Oregon Cities as a provision that says that you can declare this, a seat vacant if somebody has been absent for, absence for all meetings for sixty days. You currently have a more stringent requirement of, um, you can't be absent for, for all the meetings within a forty-five day period. This is one of the instances that we are not recommending that you align with the League of Oregon City Mob Charter and keep your more stringent forty-five day requirement. Any questions about that?
Any questions about this section? Councilor Rippe.
Was there any discussion about the thirty-day requirement? For you have to, you can't be absent for more than thirty days outside the city?
There was a lot of discussion about what it means to be absent. And the application of the thirty days and the forty-five days, yes. I would say that the general consensus, and I'm going to let Alicia tell me if I'm wrong, is that, you know, thinking about whether or not it's a charter issue versus an issue that can be addressed through a couple of rules or, um, other ways that aren't as inflexible as the charter, is that issues regarding absences and what constitutes an absence is best left to, uh, the other means.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Ewing.
So having had, uh, changes in my mind over the past few years, is there a clearer or a better word? Because to me, if your presidency is doomed or you're sitting in the seat, you're doing your assignments, but most people when they think absent, they think that you're not in it. It, was there any discussion about that? Or what might better? Was there any discussion about that, or what might better?
Give you a break. Just give you a break. This was, this was a really tough, tough subject for us, lots of factors to consider, but I, you know, when we were looking at the absent piece, there was a lot of discussion around it, and that was really the best term, because there's, there's so many different variations of what that could mean, right? To what you're saying, that by clearly defining it in here, you're potentially creating those unintended consequences.
So you're suggesting then to define it better in some other?
Correct. So some of, some of the things in the charter are intentionally left broad, so we are not putting ourselves in a predicament.
And to follow up, when you're talking about disabled, so that kind of sets my ears off, because when it's referred to here, I don't know again if that identifies somebody as still not being able, because it's so, I am disabled, I have that accommodation, does that mean that I can't serve? Because I have been determined as disabled, unable. So again, I get what you're saying, that needs probably be more defined, and our council rules instead of setting a permanent status in the charter, I'm just having problems with those two being used as a sign of, of someone who might not be.
Counselor Gutterson.
I wanted to support Counselor Ewing's comment about disability. No disability, in my opinion, should ever restrict somebody from being able to serve. I am also designated as disabled, and same situation as far as being able to attend in person or not. So I, I think we need to really be very, very careful when we talk about disability and being able to serve.
Can someone, where is that language at?
There was a page prior to this that mentioned disability.
I was like trying to. I didn't see it either.
Same.
Well, I agree with it, because I'm also considered disabled.
I'm not familiar with that reference, but the issues regarding what it means to be absent were discussed, and again, that's one of those words that we don't have, we don't have any proposed amendments because the charter needs to be flexible, and, you know, if, you know, who could have anticipated the pandemic where everybody went remote? So if we had had language in there that restricted, you know, that you had to be in person, that would have been a situation where we would have been out of line. So after discussing this, we, the committee agreed, keep the language open-ended and to allow.
Any further questions? Is there another section?
There is, it's ranked choice voting. It is not one that you guys asked the committee to review. We did spend a good amount of time on it, I'll go over it incredibly quickly here, because I know that we're at some time constraints. The committee is very interested in ranked choice voting for the city to consider in the future. Ranked choice voting requires that voters rank candidates by preference.
Can we switch the slide so we can?
Instead of, instead of just a one candidate preference, there are a lot of intricacies to what exact method of ranked choice voting you would use, especially when a setup like the city of Forest Grove, where you're not just electing one position, but you elect, you know, a number, three different, you select three people for your council every two years, which means that you would actually, if you use the same system that's in place now, you would not have proportional ranked choice voting, but proportional voting. This is best explained via some videos that we watched as, as a committee. So I think I'll just say, end by saying that ranked choice voting is on the statewide ballot in November of 2024. It's a change in law that authorizes, although we know that cities already have the authorization under home rule, authorized cities to implement ranked choice voting programs at their city, and under, if the, if the measure passes, the funding would be taken care of at the state level. If you guys started a ranked choice voting system at the local level, you would be responsible for a lot of the costs associated with it, about what rank is and the particular system that you do. So the committee is definitely interested in pursuing it, but perhaps after the November 2024 election, and also how your charter is written, so you don't actually have to amend your charter to be able to implement ranked choice voting. The city of Corvallis did ranked choice voting via ordinance, and you guys also have that in. Um, I, I think just really the big thing, it was attractive to all of us, just because, going back to that equity piece, it, it really allows you to have your vote represented well. They, not really, this person is my second choice, is my third choice. But again, we're not there yet, because it is technically still a pretty new thing, not, not many states have adopted it, so we don't have a lot of data, and it would be costly to implement at the time, so.
Any questions about ranked choice voting?
It takes a lot more research on that.
Yeah.
Videos are great.
I would just really like to thank the Charter Review Committee, Chair Johnson, Ashley, this is a lot of work, a lot of effort, the, the meeting minutes were always really well-done too, Joyce, so thank you for the time, the consideration, and the really just thoughtful conversation and recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's great.
So can I adjourn this work? Do you have, do you need anything from us? This was just to give us information, and we'll have a work session probably later to discuss some of these things. Okay, cool. Well, thank you so much, I'm going to adjourn this work session.